Okay, I'm recording.
No, they, they have come to something, so. I said that's, that's a good phone call. I'm okay with that.
Well, I told you too, I said keep in mind, whatever we do is, you know, you're gonna pay for it. If you call a lawyer, you're gonna pay for that call.
Right. Okay, it is eight o'clock, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public discussion? Okay?
I have already said everything I need to say.
Okay.
I'm waiting for you guys to make a decision.
Okay. Well, I'm hearing no further discussion, uh, we'll need a motion to approve the agenda minutes from October twenty eighth.
Cause he's down here today, right? I'll make that motion.
Someone needs a second.
Oh, so.
Okay. Second by Wacter, uh, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, would you call dug up, please? Okay. Oh, cause that's all we could do.
Well, that's why he wasn't answering.
Good morning.
He was on his way here.
Good morning. I think we got a couple of minutes left here. We're eight oh five. November.
There's a motion to open and close the public hearing for recording.
Good.
And then if we receive no comments, that would be the resolution.
Thank you.
Aaron, good morning.
Good morning, all. Good morning.
We're, we're waiting till eight oh five.
Okay.
Got a public hearing.
Well, for a second, I thought I was gonna be late, so.
Nope, you're good.
One second.
Refreshing, not holding up the show.
It is eight oh five, so we need a motion to open the public hearing for vacation of road, number forty-three between Sections forty-five of Portland Township and thirty of Buffalo Township. Motion to open public hearing, Haws?
Oh, second.
Wacter, second? Discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Haws?
Yes.
Wacter?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes. Public hearing is open. Doug, you have anything else to say?
Uh, I'll just, uh, say that, uh, notice was sent to property owners. And it was done per the Code of Iowa legally. Notice was also in the pu- uh, for the public in our published newspapers. Um, it is a road that, uh, traffic cannot travel from two ninety street to three hundred street. And landowners, uh, if this road is vacated, landowners would have access to all of their property. Three hundred or two ninety, so.
That's because you removed a bridge sometime.
There was a bridge that was removed and, uh, there was some, the Vaskey property and the property that Jerry Reddy owns now, uh, there, they own a lot of quick parts of that Section Thirty. And they no longer, they, they did some sort of surveying and conveyed land to each other, so, uh, that is no longer an issue.
Is, is anybody, maybe any comment?
Uh, we received no written comments, no verbal power.
I'm, yeah. Any comments from anybody here?
So, on behalf of the Department of Communications, we have no claim to it, um, just ensure that when, uh, grading and work is done to contact, uh, calling locates Iowa one call. We do have fiber optic cable that transits that area on, uh, on the south side of three hundred, and it's actually out in the field right away, it's actually south of the back slope. So, just to ensure we don't have an infrastructure cut, just remember to call locates, otherwise, we have no calls with it.
May I ask?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that, that's on private easement?
Yes. Yep. Correct, thank you.
Okay.
Jerry, anything on your side? Just seeing what's going on. The landowners.
Yep, yep. Yep, there's time for comments, if you have any comments, so.
One other comment would be the secondary road department would go in with dozers, uh, it's near the bridge, that grade was raised, and we, there are road ditches, so we will go in, flatten that out, so it's, uh, it will be used, uh, for the owners for till.
Do you know the split on that? Is it, where, where are the poles actually?
Uh, they are on the Kent and the Wade property. Um, we will also put some lathe out and have that property line, that section line kind of defined for you, uh, for the landowners, once we get everything, uh, dozed down and let, and flattened, so.
It's the way it appears, I, I would.
Yeah, it's all to the west, on either private easement or just overhang the road. The poles are actually on private property, they're not on the road.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to make games of road.
Well, we'll need a close public hearing.
Okay, close public hearing.
Yeah, motion by Haws.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Oh, second.
Second by Wacter. Discussion? Hearing none, uh, roll call vote, please?
Haws?
Yes.
Wacter?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes. Yeah, public hearing is closed.
You want this one, Jack?
You wanna?
Not particularly.
This is me.
You, you're a pretty jumpy guy.
This is for, uh, well, this is re- resolution number eleven dash oh four dash twenty-five dash oh one. Need a motion to make the.
I can make the motion.
All right, Haws wants to make the motion.
Well, I know he does. The numbers are thin here.
Do you want to?
I'll, I can second it, that's fine. Okay, discussion? Uh, hearing none, roll call vote, please?
Haws?
Yes.
Wacter?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes. Motion carrying?
I will email you that, and if I forget, please send me a friendly reminder.
I will do that.
I owe you so many blizzards or whatever, I can't, I can't afford to.
We're fine.
Thank you.
I guess we gotta wait five minutes. No, we gotta.
We gotta wait, cause there's a time on there.
Wait till anything after.
All that stuff?
All that stuff.
Yeah, cause there's a time on there.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thanks for being here.
The ones that are here, that was easy. Appreciate y'all.
Yeah, have a good day.
Thank you, you're welcome.
See you guys. Was that you last, or did I miss the week before?
The week before.
I was the last, yeah. Yeah, that's right. Molly must've been on vacation, she wasn't here last week.
I was, I was out, yeah. Did you miss me?
We did, we did.
Yeah, we missed you, Molly.
I'm, I'm glad you made it.
We waited to discuss all the important stuff till last week.
You know, in my heart, I knew you would.
Yeah.
It's amazing how slow five minutes can be.
I know, I know.
And then at other times, it seems to just fly by.
I know, right?
Stop to feed the pigs this morning, we had more, a few more baby pigs.
Oh. Do you battle feed them?
No.
They'll do their own thing.
Let them do their own thing.
We used to have some pigs when I was growing up, but we got to battle feed, and I thought that was the best thing yet.
Yeah, yeah. Well, there was two of them, so far.
Mm-hmm.
She wasn't done, so.
Okay. We got to the Casey Hall about quarter to six. And mine was there till about seven fifteen, the pool's open at seven, so they're all set and ready to go. So, how the pools are open and going smoothly, so far, so hopefully it stays that way.
Yeah. Yeah, I need to go in and vote at the community center like.
I have some tea, though, because it's too hard for me to.
Yeah.
I like Sunday.
I can understand that. You voted at the community center, Wesley? Yeah?
Not anymore, I have some tea.
Well, I know, but like, if, if you were to go in, yeah. Think about who I wanna write in today.
The cameras out here can see me, I have some tea.
Yeah, yeah.
It's good enough.
The paparazzi.
Yeah.
All right, eight fifteen. We need a motion to open the public hearing for private tile improvements, DD one sixteen. Somebody wanna open the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Wacter.
I can second.
Second by Haws. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please?
Haws?
Yes.
Wacter?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes. It does get to me quick. Okay, public hearing is open, and, um, yeah, the landowners have come to an agreement outside of our involvement, so they are not here this morning and don't plan to proceed with the formalities here, so.
We need no action.
We need no action taken today, um, they've worked it out privately, so. So, yep, that is a good thing. No information to present, and we'll need a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Wacter.
I'll second.
Second by Haws. Discussion? Roll call vote, please?
Haws?
Yes.
Wacter?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes. Public hearing is closed, and then no action will be taken on the following item. Okay. Discussion decision approval of change order one, DD four, lap forty-two improvement, it's impacted.
Change lesser amounts of material, is that correct?
That's what it looks like, yeah. Well, someone wanna approve or motion to approve that?
I can do that.
Okay. Motion to approve, change order, I'll second it. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carrying? We have discussion decision approval of payoff two, DD four, lap forty-two. Need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Wacter. Need a second?
I'll second.
Second by Haws. Discussion?
Somebody, some, some of us, I'm talking through the panel, maybe there's somebody checked it over and things were in order, and, correct?
Um, well, this is the information that Bolton Inc. sends to us. So, Bolton Inc. is the one that puts these, does the checking over and puts the information together.
Is there still retention on this, or, or is this the end of it?
Um, yeah, I don't think this is the end of it yet, cause there's still sixteen thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy cents in retainage left.
Typically, they get labeled as semi-final and final, correct?
Yeah, correct.
So, this is just a standard pay off.
Thank you. I'll make a motion.
Uh, there already is a motion?
There is a motion.
Yeah.
I mean, we seconded.
You seconded, yeah.
Okay, I'm done.
Okay, no, hearing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carrying? Drainage repair request?
Do you wanna do everybody's?
Yeah, I, I'll read Kyle's.
Oh. I think I have one, yeah.
Oh, you have two.
I have two. Oh, that's right, I forgot, I was thinking.
I think these are all private stretch.
Okay. Okay, ready? Go for it.
All right, this is request number ninety-four, um, Drainage District number ninety, and, let's see, Township, and, and, uh, Lincoln Township, okay. Uh, and this is in the southeast and southwest, uh, quarter, there's a hole, about fifty, sixty foot of fence. It's flagged with four flags, and this is by Larry.
Wurges.
Wurges, okay. And then, repair number, request number ninety-five is also on Drainage District number ninety, Lincoln, on the northeast, southeast, uh, quarter. A hole that you can see buried power line and natural gas line in that area, this is by, uh, Kim Ruby.
Correct.
Uh, then there's number ninety-six in Drainage District eighty-two, also in Lincoln Township, the northeast, northeast quarter, uh, it's just a hole. This is Dale Miners. And then repair request number ninety-seven is in Drainage District sixty-nine in Greenwood Township, on the southeast, southeast corner, quarter, um, two large holes that are flagged, this is by Steve Polash. And then the last one, number ninety-eight, is in District number ninety, in southeast, northeast quarter of Lincoln Township. A hole. Knocked it up here, um, that's filled up by Rob Price. I've got nine, number ninety-nine in DD one seventy-four, this is for Jonathan Chambers. There's water backing up pretty badly in the field under the road there, um, or from across the road, I'm not sure if there's an issue in the tile there. Wants it investigated. Then Aaron, or not Aaron, I guess Brian Hunt filled it out, um, they've gotta blow out in the field. That's number hundred and H U K joint Drainage District one.
Okay, need a motion for supervisors to handle their requests?
I'll make motion.
Motion by Wacter.
I can second.
Second by Haws. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carrying?
You, you can just set those on Kyle's desk, I suppose.
Do you want?
They're sitting there.
Okay. You wanna call dug up? Josh, please?
I'm gonna sign those.
Sign those, if you wanna go ahead and do your auditor discussion.
Sure.
While we're waiting.
Okay, so, next week.
Reminder. Discussion on improvement on one thirtyth street.
All right, thanks.
Reminder, next week, we are not meeting on the eleventh, because it's Veterans Day and the courthouse is closed, so we will be meeting on the twelfth due to canvas of election that has to be held, so we'll have a regular board meeting next Tuesday, November twelfth, instead of the eleventh.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, sorry, Wednesday, Wednesday, November twelfth. Um, at nine o'clock, we have a DD twenty tile improvement hearing, and the first here, the canvas of election. And that's all so far. Um, I do, we did get our annual conference registration form for Iowa Drainage District Association, will be held Friday, December fifth, um, in Fort Dodge, so, um, anybody who's gonna be attending that, please let me know, so I can get you registered for that. Registrations have to be submitted by, I think it said, December first, so, um, you can let me know if you're gonna be attending that, I will get that submitted. Of course, today is Election Day, First City School election pulls open this morning at seven o'clock, open till eight o'clock tonight. Um, and things seem to be going well so far, so, and that's all I have.
Okay. Um, did you mention the, um, district supervisor meeting in Mason City?
Send you guys that email, so you all should've gotten that email.
Okay, all right. Well, we are up to discussion decision for improving one hundred and thirtieth street east of Highway one sixty-nine to prevent flooding. I wasn't here a couple of weeks ago when this was discussed last. Is what action are we looking for today, or what, uh, what are some of our options?
I think where we left it was we requested some cost on some culvert, culverts to be put in, um, that got that information for us, and I think we're up to just making a decision on where to go next with that.
Okay?
Um, yes, the cost of a forty-two inch arch pipe would be one hundred and two dollars and sixty-eight cents per foot, and, uh, I also asked for a price of a forty-eight inch arch pipe, forty-eight inch equivalent arch pipe, and that'd be one hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-four cents. So, um, just for the board's information, I, I did do a little bit of research on this piece of property. Mr. Pasika and, uh, Mrs. Pasika purchases in nineteen eighty, May sixth, it looks like, of nineteen eighty. Uh, in nineteen forty, there was a house constructed on that. I, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think in nineteen eighty, there was a building that constructed along with the house. A twenty-four by forty-two inch, or forty-two foot building. Um, in nineteen ninety-three, uh, this would be on Highway eighteen, April one, that was the highest stage flood, uh, recorded in that particular location.
Did you say eighteen? Did you? Highway one sixteen. Yeah, I think you said eighteen. Highway eighteen?
Yeah.
That's where they recorded.
There's a stream gate on Highway eighteen.
Gotcha, okay.
And that was recorded. After that flood, there was another building constructed, which was thirty foot by thirty-six foot, uh, building constructed. Uh, in two thousand and six, it looks like the twenty-four by forty-two foot building burnt and it was removed, and then in two thousand and six, another building was, uh, constructed. In nineteen seventy-nine, the second largest flood, uh, was recorded on Highway eighteen, August twenty-three of nineteen seventy-nine. Mr. Pasika referenced that, uh, buildings were being damaged by floodwater, but I would think that, uh, if, that with those floods, they, they would've, if they're gonna build a building, they knew that if they put it on property, it was going to flood there. So, they had experienced that. Uh, the road itself is at, uh, approximately, road to the east of Mr. Pasika's is at thousand ninety-seven. It appears that around the radius of, uh, the B sixty-three in Highway eighteen, the northwest of that is about ten ninety-eight sixteen. All of the property is within the federal FEMA flood plain. Um, it is on the map, it is all federal flood plain. So, I'll just say that, yes.
Nope, thanks for the information. Larry, do you have any further thoughts, or?
No, I, uh.
Okay. This is given the opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, I.
Okay.
Said my piece earlier.
Nope, very, very good. Any further thoughts from you guys, I guess, then?
I wish I had some inspiration, I don't want. I guess, does anybody know, is, is there, is, is there, if there's a six inch downpour, localized downpour there, is it, does, does, does it happen then, or does it only happen when there's a major flood?
Uh, back in the early eighties, we had nine inches of rain one night. And the water flows around out of that field into the, my bottom there. But, uh, yeah, that was the only time we'd ever had that kinda rain that affected me. But, yeah, it did go over the road, well, everything down there was underwater.
So, why, why don't you, go ahead, go ahead, dude.
I'll, hundred and sixteen dollars a foot for that culvert, what would it take, fifty feet? Uh.
Thirty-eight feet, what'd you use for last night?
I think it was the after the.
Yeah, that sounds right.
So, you're talking thirty-eight hundred dollars for the culvert? Or, say four thousand dollars? And that would alleviate my problem? That forty-eight inch?
I don't know if it's gonna alleviate your problem, that's, I mean, during certain... Water will flow through it, but there's, it's in a flood plain, so when the water, when, when floods get there, it's still going to be so high, 'cause the flood plain only can carry so much water. And it's all, everything's in the flood plain. Whether you're talking about Highway one sixty-nine, uh, our B sixty-three, our county route, and the water, it's not going to make it so water will not go over the road. When it gets so high, it's just, water's flowing, the flood plain can't, can't contain anymore, so the water goes up, without making the flood plain larger, which would be very, very difficult.
No, I, I think we all understand that, um, that, yeah, it's not gonna prevent water from going over your road, um...
To the east on that gravel road, as I stand like in front of my building, there's a crown in that gravel road, between the bottom of the hill and my place. You guys were out surveyed, right?
Uh, there is a crown...
What I mean is...
From the shoulder to the centerline.
No, 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 okay, from the bottom of the hill to my place, there is a spot where the road comes up about two feet. Would it be possible just to cut that part down, at least to the height of just east of my driveway? That's where the water goes over, just east of my driveway, that's where it starts.
Yeah, well, I think... Where does the water go over the road?
Right there on the top of them culverts.
So, that is the lowest point then?
Right, that's what I'm saying, is it possible to cut that road down, say, two feet farther east, and allow the water to cross the road, just a little farther east? I mean, they could just take the gravel off, take some dirt out of there, and put the gravel back.
Are you saying that would create a new low spot?
It would.
Well, maybe.
Then we would be maintaining the road more, 'cause the water would be going over the road more. If, I mean, if we lower the lowest point wherever it's at, I, I mean, if we do that, naturally, a, a smaller rain event is going to go over the, over the gravel road, causing more work in the future for the road.
Well, I'll leave you guys up to your decision, I mean, uh, uh, I've been trying for the last month, month and a half to get something done, though, I guess it's in your hands.
I don't wanna put words in anybody's mouth, so, let's, let's get this right, what I, correct me if what I'm saying, please. He, Leroy came in here saying that the code says you can't back up water, the road can't be the dam to back up water. Did you tell me once that it doesn't necessarily say that?
Are you not agree with that statement?
Can you expand on that? Or not?
Well, there, every, every time you build anything over a flood plain, you are constricting, you're constricting the, the area. One thing that happens is the velocity of the water through a structure will increase, and in Cassuth County, with land being as flat as it does, it, it returns back to its, uh, normal water elevation at the flood plain, so it, it will, it's moving a quantity of water, uh, cubic feet per second upstream as it goes, and that might be with a velocity of three feet per second, well, if it goes through a bridge, it might, it'll move the same amount of water, but at a faster velocity, but there gets to be a point where it's going to back up, because it just is impossible without building a structure over the whole flood plain. So, and the Department of Natural Resources, when the, the... At one time, it was a hundred, hundred square miles, this is, happens to be nine hundred and eighty square miles, whenever we built a structure that had a hundred square miles of drainage, the Department of Natural Resources and the Corps of Engineers would review, and they would, they would allow three quarters of a foot, nine inches of backwater.
Nobody here has a lot of tenure, but I'm gonna assume that there's other places in the county where we have a big, when we have a big rain, and that it backs up temporarily until, but, and so we don't have, we don't have culverts in place everywhere, and, and I also assume that this has been discussed somewhere previous to today and this year, about those instances, somebody's complained, or whatever, they wanted more culverts put in, or whatever, is that true, or not, not, can't?
Plum Creek Pits is an example, and, and there is a, a road that goes underneath of a railroad trestle, back to the west of Plum Creek Pits, and there are culverts there, so when the water, the flow of the water reduces, it does go underneath those culverts, but when it gets so high, the road under the railroad trestle, that's one of the first roads that water goes over, and then the Plum Creek Pits, uh, there again, it, when it gets so high, it goes over that. During low flow conditions, the culverts will work, but during high flow conditions, they, again, goes to the flood plain, and the water is so great that it just, uh, ends up going over, topping the road.
So, so that's an example, another example of a river bottom, even up in the elevated portions of the county, there's, there's gotta be times when water, there's enough of a rain, the water goes over the road, the culvert can't take it or not really, that doesn't really happen. I know, I know.
There would be, there, there were ins- incidents last...
Sure, I know.
Year where, you know, around Wesley, there, there was a big rain.
Union to happen.
You know, I mean, but there was, you know, anywhere from seven to ninety.
But it's gone relatively quickly.
Yeah. In the, in the road... Again, without going, building a structure that would be through that whole plain of wherever the water is running, it's gonna back up, but it, it comes, it, uh, returns to normal after a certain period of time.
Putting another culvert would just alleviate... alleviate water after it exits the flood plain levels, that, that would be the only purpose for doing that.
Right.
Correct, yeah.
In nineteen ninety-three, did water get in the house?
No.
And after the ninety-three event, we actually put in more culverts.
Okay.
And that is the largest recorded, this is on Highway eighteen, this isn't the same location, but...
Same river, yeah.
That, that particular flood, if it was in the north end of the county, it was in the south end of the county, it was all over Cassuth County. I do remember that going up to where the East Fork, the Des Moines River, there's Cassuth County, and driving all the way to the Humboldt County line. That, that flood affected every river crossing. I think even Highway eighteen was closed when that flood. And Highway one sixty-nine south of Humboldt was affected by that flood. I, 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 I'm still thinking about it, I haven't said that we're not gonna do it, so I think if, uh...
Ultimately, it should be your recommendation.
I would hope so.
Yes. So, where do you wanna leave, where do you wanna put that today?
Let me, I, I, like I say, I, there are times where five thousand dollar expenditure and some, I mean, a ten thousand dollar expenditure with our labor, um, if it wouldn't help the road. There are other times I sit there and go, I don't know, I don't think it's gonna work, so, if you just allow me to continue to think about it, and I'll talk with Mr. Paseka, and, and we'll go from there. I gathered a lot of information in the last couple of weeks since then, and I apologize for...
Yep.
He has come in and talked with me, I, and, um, we are trying to get a lot of things buttoned up, and we are getting some things, but that goes back a couple of years, too, that, uh, even some of our ditch cleaning, things like that, so...
Sounds fine, factory to me.
Okay.
Sounds like a place to go, me, too.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll leave it there today.
I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Leroy.
You bet, have a great day.
You, too.
You, too.
Your full number again, I know I have it.
Five, one, five, eight, nine, zero.
Yeah, it's there.
You know, we got about, uh, three hundred acres of fifty, and I started it last Monday, but I didn't get much done with the writing coming in now, so...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, no action on that item today, then. Discussion decision, exercise right to transfer station hauling agreement with Patent Enterprises?
All right, uh, yes, uh, Patent Enterprises, um, we took bids for transportation back in, uh, twenty twenty, and, uh, Patent Enterprises were the low bid for that, and we did get an agreement with them for a five-year term. Part of the contract does state that at the completion of the term, Cassuth Waste Management Association has the option to extend this agreement for three years. Um, if you go back and you look in the back of the con, uh, contract as far as compensation, it does say, if the agreement is renewed, the, there is an adjustment to the compensation paid to the contractor, uh, based on the Consumer Price Index. Uh, from October of twenty twenty-two, October of twenty twenty-five, there's been about approximately a thirty percent increase. I visited with Dan, I think we should, we should go ahead and, uh, take our right to extend the contract, Dan is providing, uh, Patent Enterprises is providing a very good service to the transfer station, um, we have a good relationship with it, and if we go another three years based on that, uh, Consumer Price Index, um, I think, uh, that is fair for him as far as making an adjustment. We do also adjust, uh, adjust prices for, uh, loads due to, um, prices of diesel fuel also, we do have that spelled out, so I think we have a good thing going there with him, and I'd like the board to go ahead and, um, extend it, exercise its right to extend for another three years.
Okay. Need a motion to extend the contract, then?
I'll make that one.
Motion by Haas, I'll second it. Any discussion?
Just a quick question.
Yes.
So, if it's X, it's just gonna be X one point three?
Uh, yeah, approximately one, I'm just gonna wait till the November come out, um, it starts actually in January.
He, he's content?
Yeah, he's indicated that he wants to keep watching.
Okay. Um, if no further discussion, then all in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Discussion decision approval?
Carter, could you just sign that, please?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Yep. Approval for gravel pit agriculture land leases?
Uh, yes, we, we did have some leases returned, uh, to us, the first lease is, I'll just say Corey Hagan, uh, it's a zonal gravel pit, it is a quarter section of property, I put the motion and an aerial photograph, uh, Hagan's own a pivot for irrigating there, there is some gravel that's been taken out in the southeast and gravel, excuse me, southwest, and the northwest, it's not a whole hundred and sixty, but it, uh, it is, uh, substantial area that they do farm there, but I would recommend that the board would approve of this and have Carter sign it.
Motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Wactor. Haas, you want a second?
Yes, I can, sorry.
Okay, no, you're good.
I was looking at the motion.
Any discussions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried.
And then we also have a, uh, lease back to Matt Doranbeer, uh, who farms the ag land on the, what we call Maguire Pit, it's right north of Irvington, uh, there is approximately, um, it's actually right now, most, it's seventeen point four on this, we've taken out some gravel on this aerial, so this would, uh, this would be for seventeen point four, it does get adjusted, Matt's a good tenant as well, um, so I'd like to get that continuing with Matt.
Motion by Haas.
I'll second.
Second by Wactor. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, I got a couple for you to sign, can Carter just?
Sure, yep.
Get it all ready for you. So, that's Matt Doranbeers, and this is Corey Hagan's.
Just the one?
And Tammy, yeah, and I'll get those notarized. Very good, thank you.
Good, thank you. Any construction in the right of way?
Uh, we do not, I know that, uh, we talked about, uh, I think it's Roger Jensen, uh, doing a project, and we were given in verbal, they did return some paperwork, it was just this morning, uh, if Doug was going to get that, he was gonna bring it up, otherwise we'll have the board take formal action on it next week.
Okay.
But that's how we set it.
Roger Jensen, we do have that in our folder.
Yeah, okay. Is, is there a motion in there, too?
There is.
I just don't have a paper copy, but if you'd like to go ahead and act on it, that's fine. If, maybe just read the motion real quick, Josh.
Sure, uh, it's, Board of Supervisors, Cassuth County, uh, hereby authorize and give permission to Rodney Jensen, Albona Iowa, to install sixty-four feet of twelve foot, or is that twelve?
Twelve inches.
Class four reinforced concrete pipe and ten feet of eighteen inch, uh, CMP by cutting three three fifty at, um, eighty feet east of the southwest corner of section twenty-seven in Seneca Township.
That could be, if you guys would like to make that motion, I could bring you everything up and get it signed.
Great, motion by Wactor. Second by Haas. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of approving? Hearing none, all in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried.
Very good, thank you.
In case, I may in no way offend it, in case it affects your official, unless those, those leases still have the old supervisor's names on them, it matters.
Yes, they did.
I don't care, it's not a topic, even. I'm not, I'm not crushed.
Have to discipline myself.
No.
Sorry about that, I, I will probably, uh, we'll, we'll get that taken care of, probably have to sign it, and have to send it back to the other. Well, I apologize for that, thank you for bringing it up.
Sorry.
No, that's, no, that's a detail that I overlooked. Alright.
Anything for discussion?
Uh, there is some railroad work, we just got called yesterday, the Hu- Union Pacific Railroad, this is, uh, in the city of Laverne, and I'm sorry, let's see, what, it's the north-south road where the railroad crosses up in Laverne.
P sixty?
No, uh.
Oh, in town?
In town, there in the east.
Oh, Maple Street?
Maple, thank you, Maple Street, they're doing some work there, so that road is closed, it's only open for a day. Uh, we did get a, we did get, were notified last week, uh, that there is a retirement effective immediately at the Albone shop. Uh, so we will be, uh, advertising for that. Comprehensive plan meeting, we did move that back, we, we needed to get some things and make sure that we had thirty days of review time, and we're gonna be just a little bit short, that's gonna be December fifteen. And that's really all that I have right now, we are doing maintenance on roads and ditch cleaning, trying to take care of a few different locations, so. The operators are out working, taking advantage of this next one.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, thank you.
Too long will be so nice.
Pardon me?
Yeah. Said before, too long will be so nice.
Don't say that. Nothing, it doesn't look terrible.
No, no.
So.
I just know it's not.
I'm afraid you're on crack.
Last in, the long time last year.
Yeah, yeah, I do.
I think we made it until January. March. March.
Yeah, we had those big snows.
A little half inch.
We were in there, but.
Yeah, yeah.
No, we were all worried about having a baby on January tenth, and it was dry and no snow, and thirty degrees.
And no one, I don't think anybody complains about little, little snows.
Talk to my wife.
Oh.
I like the snow too.
Yeah, I, I like it too.
Okay, Howard, you have any board meetings?
I had, uh.
We had economic development, yeah.
Economic development, uh, nothing earth-shattering going on there, they, I believe they said they're coming in discussing stuff, or whatever.
Okay.
And he's looking to see if that, Tuesday, that's what it is.
It is.
Their budget presentation, I believe they're gonna ask for the same as what they.
Okay.
But that's all I have.
Joshua, any?
We did not have any meetings, so.
I did not have any meetings either, so Tammy would like to adjourn, so need a motion to adjourn?
So.
Motion by Wactor, second by Hoz, discussion. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried, we're adjourned at eight fifty-five. Happy elections.
Thank you.